Alright, you're free to go.
Thank you Spencer. Welcome everybody to our planning board meeting for March the 7th. For today, we have one variance, we have a couple of rezonings and we have three lot consolidations for consideration. And I'll, just before we even call the meeting to order, I'd first like to take the opportunity to welcome Paul Conley, our newest board member to the group. And I'm sure Paul will add with his experience, he, I'm sure he's going to be a clear asset to the board. Thank you, welcome Paul.
Oh, thank you Terry, I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to being part of the board and I've been on enough committees that it makes sense to walk before you run.
Yeah, yeah, no, we certainly welcome you, that's for sure.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Okay folks, so we'll call our meeting to order. Declarations of conflict of interest, do I see any? I see none, okay, thank you. I'll need approval of the agenda, I'll need a mover and a seconder for that please. Moved by Council Yankoff, seconded by Council McCabe. All those in favor, please just raise your hand or you can motion in one way or another. I think everyone's in favor, okay, thank you. Adoption of the minutes, so I'll need those minutes approved first and then we can go into a discussion if there's any. So perhaps Paul, you could move, you want to move that Paul?
Sure, I'll move that, sure.
Okay, thank you, and seconded by Council McCabe. All those in favor, adopting a minute? Okay, contrawind, I think none, okay, thank you. So any business arising from the minutes? Okay, we're getting along great here, that's great, thank you. So we'll go into number six, which is reports. The first one, 6A is a variance for 2022 Lower Malpec Road. PIN number 388322696989 and 388330. And I believe Laurel, you got the floor.
I have the floor. Okay, good evening everyone. This is a variance application to allow an increase in height for a proposed 74 unit apartment building. The building also contains 33 affordable units and it's located at 20 to 22 Lower Malpec Road, right here. The property is zoned highway commercial, it's C2 zone. And the maximum permitted height in the C2 zone for an apartment building is 49.2 feet. And the applicant is proposing an average height of 64.5 feet. So due to the drop in the grade on the property, on this side of the property, the building is proposed to be 70 feet in height at the back, six stories, and 59 feet in the front, five stories, for an average finished height from grade of 64.5 feet. I'm just gonna switch to this one. The bylaw defines height as the vertical distance measured from the average finished grade to the highest point of the roof surface, so right around the building, at the back as well, to the top of the roof. So the applicant has applied under section 3.9, 3.9.1A of the bylaw for variance. And that section says, the proposed building height is more than the percentage allowed with a minor variance and the application is not eligible for a bonus height. So this building is not eligible for a bonus height because it's in the C2 zone, which also steps down to the R4A zone. Those two zones don't allow bonus heights. So therefore, to increase the height, you would have to apply under the variance, the major variance section. So the application also involves a lot consolidation of PIN numbers, just gonna flip to this one. Sorry. There we go. Of PIN numbers 388322696989 and 388330. So currently we have three PINs, one here, here and here. And the proposal is to consolidate everything. The PIN number 388330 is landlocked, it's piece back here. It doesn't have frontage on a public road. I'm not sure when that occurred, but it's been like that for a number of years. And also, the current hotel or motel encroaches on one of the property boundaries. So you can see this piece right here encroaches over the property boundary. So allowing the consolidation would bring the property into conformance, so it would allow this piece to have frontage on a public road and it would also remove this encroachment of the building. So legislative requirements, we, the bylaw requires that the public is notified of any variance application. So in accordance with the bylaw, the notification letter was sent to 22 property owners located within 100 meters of the property. We did receive one letter back within the required timeline, which was 4pm on March 2nd. The letter that we received was not in support of the variance and I did include that with your package, so it was there for you to read. So the building is proposed to be located on the southeast portion of the property, right here. The topography in this area, it drops significantly at the back of the lot facing the pond. So this area here drops down towards the pond, this is the direction of flow on the property. The building's proposed to have six stories on the back with a walkout basement level and on the front, it's five stories facing the internal parking lot. So five stories here and then on the back, which is here, it's six. The project was required to proceed through the design review process because there is an affordable housing component included with this. And it did receive support from the design reviewer and the design review board. There were some minor design review requirements that the board stipulated and the design reviewer recommended to be included when the building is redesigned. And those requirements will be included within a development agreement. So the building is visible from both Malpec Road and Capital Drive. But however, it's buffered on both streets due to its location behind the Queen's Arms Hotel, Queen's Arms, and this would be the building, and also from the pond. You can see it, but there is a conifer tree stand that kind of blocks it from Capital Drive. There's also currently a conifer tree stand along the north boundary of the property and along the properties on Nellie Drive. And the bylaw requires that a 13 meter buffer be included along any properties that join residential, low density residential properties. So it's, the property is located on a busy collector road. The building has decided on the south side of the property to avoid any land use conflicts with this low density neighborhood and to the north. And the project, since it's also located on McNeil's Pond, prior to proceeding with the site design, the applicant has the provincial Department of Environment delineate the wetland. That was shown on the survey plan, you can kind of see the delineation line along here. And the Provincial Environmental Act requires that a 15 meter buffer zone be maintained along any water course or wetlands. Building setback to the wetland will be required to meet the bylaw as per the Environmental Protection Act. And also, section 1.0, 1.3 of the zoning and development bylaw allows the city to require a watershed management plan. So due to the proximity of the wetland, one of these watershed management plans should be required in this situation. And as well, as I mentioned earlier, the buffer would be required along the low density residential neighborhood to provide some privacy between this development and the low density neighborhood. So this proposal, it was also sent to the manager of Public Works because of its location on Lower Malpec Road and the intersection of Capital Drive. And because of that intersection and the amount of traffic in the area, he is recommending that if the variance is approved, that a traffic study be performed prior to a building permit being issued. And staff concur with that recommendation. Also, housing and affordable rental units are in demand in this area of the city because this is a proposed affordable housing project. This area of the city is conducive to residents being able to access services. So, because there's many services and amenities in the area within walking distance. Public transit's also readily available within the area for people to access. And I've included various sections in the official plan in the report to consider when reviewing this variance request. It also included a quick summary in the report of the application's positive, neutral attributes and the shortcomings. So staff does recognize that this is a considerable variance request. And however, given the current demand for affordable housing within the city, the property's location within a commercial center and its proximity to amenities and a bus road, it's staff's opinion that this is an appropriate location for a multi-unit development. Staff recognizes that the building is higher than the maximum height permitted in the zone. However, the building is setback considerably and screened by other built form and McNeil's Pond. So the pond and this existing building does help to screen it. Given that this, staff does not feel that the additional height will create a significant visual impact on Capital Drive or Lower Malpec Road. Also, if the properties are consolidated, it will bring the landlocked parcel located behind the former motel, this one here, into conformance with the bylaw and it will remove this encroachment. So if the variance is approved, if you do choose to approve the variance, then the property owner would be required to obtain a traffic study prior to the building and development permit. And we would also recommend for a watershed management plan subject to the Environmental Act along with the signing of a development agreement. So with that, staff are recommending for the proposal subject to those requirements. If there's any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you very much Laurel. So I guess I'll start by, just the only question is, so with the, with the letter that was sent in, not in favor, would it be fair to say though, you've addressed most of the issues with your presentation?
Yes, like a lot of the comments they did bring up in the letter, we were already looking at already. And I will say, like they were, the people that wrote the letter were very thorough. So they, you know, they did put a lot of thought into that letter. However, staff were already looking at some of those considerations with McNeil's Pond and where it's located and the low density neighborhood. So, I mean, we have to kind of look at all that and then we have to balance out the positives and the negatives. I mean, it is a tall building. It isn't the only one in that area. We did approve one on Capital Drive, a little further down, like near May Point Road, the hotel, about four or five years ago. So, I mean, they're kind of considerably close in height. But yeah, it is a change, but due to the topography in the area, that does help to bring the height of the building down, you know, from the streetscape.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Laurel folks?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
You sure can, Paul.
Um, I looked on the map here Laurel and I tried to figure out the distance from this building to the rear of the lots there, the low density subdivision. Do you know how close it is?
Uh, this building to the subdivision over here?
Yes.
Like the back of the building?
Yeah.
Oh gosh, um, I haven't scaled it, let me see. I'm guessing it's probably a couple hundred feet, but I would prefer to confirm that. But it, yeah, it's definitely a distance for sure. The hotel is probably setback about 50 or 60 feet, so from Lower Malpec Road, so.
Yeah, give me a point of reference, that the length of the proposed apartment building is 180 feet. So it's a good 150 feet to the, to those lots adjacent.
From here to here.
And the other question I had Laurel, what does affordable housing mean in this situation?
Um, Robert, maybe you could answer that because I'm, I'm not sure which program the author is applying under, but I believe he did indicate he was applying under the provincial program.
That's correct, yeah. No, we do the provincial program for the 33 units.
So with what the gentleman there wrote in, so he was referring to a bunch of trees that was taken out, a natural buffer by Kirkland Drive there. So is there, could a buffer, could a row of trees be put there as we head towards the subdivision?
I think what he was talking about a few years back, I believe there was trees removed in this area here because I think maybe they extended this road. Just kind of going from memory, so I think there were some trees like along this area, but there's still some trees over in this area near the subdivision, which I, we would look to help to have that preserved. Because the parking is here, so there wouldn't be really any requirement to remove trees back here, would there Robert?
No. To the northeast side, no.
Yeah, that would be nice, if they could remain, yeah. Okay, thanks Robert for your expertise there. Any other questions concerned guys?
Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, oh sorry, Mr. Hammy, go ahead.
So the chair, coming into that, to the proposed apartment building, is that the entrance, there's two entrances, one closer to the corner, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, the main entrance is centered in the building, but there's two exits and entrances from the fire stairs. So there's three, essentially three entrances on the northwest side.
One on each end and then in the center.
That's right.
And the parking?
And also the walkout basement.
Right, exactly. And the parking, it looks to be behind the motel slash hotel?
Correct.
And is that, how many parking spots are required for those number of units?
One per unit. And then they also get a break on parking for the affordable component.
Yeah, three quarters per unit.
So in behind the U-shaped motel is where all the parking would be, that and a little bit to the north?
Yes. North and to the west, there's parking in front of the building, of the hotel. Previous hotel.
Some here and then back here.
And will those, that would still leave enough on the side in the front with the, if the hotel, I'm not sure what it's staying is, if it's staying as a lower, or rental house?
It's currently being used, it's currently being used as an apartment building.
Right. So that will leave enough parking spots with that?
So, yes, 66 are required for this development, 70 additional parking stalls are all provided to what's existing. So we're four more than what's actually required for the increased development.
And then come in off of the Lower Malpec Road, the two entrances or entrance exit would still be used? Is that the way I see it on the, on one of the drawings here, on this drawing?
Yeah, they're not changing the entrance and exit.
So they would stay the same, so you would come in off the front of the, towards the front of the building?
Correct.
Okay.
And during the design review, there was a recommendation for a sidewalk extending to Malpec Road, to the apartment building, which has since been added and updated the site plan about this one.
Along here.
Yeah, and that would form part of that development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Basil. Any other, Council Yankoff, you have a question?
Just a question, thank you Chair. If the, if the application for the 33 affordable units is not acceptable, whether they're going through CMAC or the province, where does that leave the parking concerns? Because you say you get a bonus if they're affordable? Just if, if there could be more clarity around that, that would be great, thank you.
They still have enough, they have more than what they need under the current use. So they would be fine as far as, if they didn't get the affordable units approved. There's an excess now currently of how many spaces Robert, I forget? Is it four or six, something like that?
There's four additional, yeah, the ones required. That assumes 25 under that 0.75 stall allowable for affordable units. So, but either way, you can see there's quite a bit of remaining land if additional spaces was needed, which I don't think there would be, they could certainly be added.
Yeah, that's one thing, they do have the space, they have more parking, don't they?
Right, yeah, but this is all, the business plan and model for this building is all based on affordable. Hence, a fairly rectilinear shape. Keeping the overall cost down, we did our very best with the exterior and working with a reasonably tight budget.
Yeah, and one concern, I guess, that was brought up Robert, maybe you could explain it, was the garbage receptacles and how that's going to be taken care of?
So, yeah, so that was also adjusted in an updated site plan. Again, we're showing an older version, but the receptacles were moved to the north portion of the property and not on entry. So if you were approaching from the south through the existing curb to the apartment building, you couldn't see them. In fact, this assisted too with the, the big dropping of grades on that side. So that was one of the items brought up during the design review and we adjusted it since.
Okay, thanks Robert. Any other questions for Laurel or Robert? I see none, okay. So I guess what I'll need now is for a conclusion here. So do we have, do we have someone that wants to put a motion on the floor to go with staff's recommendation to, to recommend the height variance along with the lot consolidation? So I guess I'll need a mover and a seconder for that if we want to go down that route. I think it doesn't really matter if somebody wants to move it, well you gotta go. Okay, moved by Chris?
Can move for staff's recommendations.
Okay, thank you Chris. I'll need a seconder.
I would second that Terry.
Okay Paul, thank you very much. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And those that are not in favor? I see none, okay, very good, thank you very much. It sure looks like it's, you know, anytime we can help with affordable housing, it's a good thing and protect the neighborhood around, that's the key for that. So thank you very much everybody. So moving on, we have, sorry, I'm missing my pager, sorry. So we have rezoning 18 Park Street. This is a request for a site specific exemption for the conversion of an existing legal non-conforming commercial building, which used to be called Signcraft on Park Street and it wants to be turned into a four unit residential apartment building. And I believe Robert is on board to explain.
Good evening folks, just bear with me while I'm sharing the content. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes we can Robert.
Your, I think we see your screen, not the presentation.
Yeah, you only see this. Has to be enlarged there.
And Mr. Chair, Stacy's also in the call, yeah.
Stacy, you got on eh?
Yeah, I figured it out.
A little, little bit of, anyway, yeah, I heard you showed up at the building.
I'll get this eventually.
Oh, well it's tough times, right? What's going on? Welcome.
Thank you. Alright, so folks, can you see the presentation now?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, so the application before tonight is a site specific exemption for 18 Park Streets. The purpose of the site specific exemption is to convert an existing commercial building, which was once the Signcraft building, into a four unit residential apartment building. This is the subject property of the existing commercial building. That looks to be converted to four unit apartment units. This shows you basically a survey site plan. As you can see, the property owned by Delmac Signs is right here, the subject property itself, was once part of a lot adjacent to it, which is looking at 14 Park Streets. Just to give the board members an indication, an idea, the existing building once brought to a four unit apartment building would maintain two on-site parking and then there would be a share parking agreement by way of easement registered on the title to accommodate the additional two stalls that would be required under the zoning and development bylaw. And that would be the parking standards. The board might also remember that back in the summer of 2020, there was an application for 14 Park Streets. That's also was applied for by the same applicant for two variances, one for lots frontage and one for lot area to allow for the existing duplex. And they were applied through that process where it was approved by council and they got a building development permit to formally create that as a duplex. So this is the structure that's adjacent to it and it's looking to do the same thing with two additional apartments. This is the posed floor plan, so this would, work would entail mostly interior renovations. I don't believe that there would be, well there'd be minor exterior modifications other than the facade itself. But this is the interior, what the interior unit layout would be. And then you can see here the posed elevations with some balcony, inset balconies and a common entrance. So just to give some people, some members of the board here, some history. Permit was issued in 1973, that was to construct a service shop. And then in the 80s, went through interior renovations and it was used as a sign building for commercial purposes. It's been used as a, and continues to exist as a legal non-conforming use. Obviously, the area is located in a residential zone, low density residential, which is the R2 zone. And then previously, the 14 Park Streets was approved for two major variances for lot area frontage to allow for the development of a duplex. So we can see that there's been history of this area being redeveloped. Just to give you folks some idea of analysis in regards to apartment buildings, initially the applicant applied through an R3 zone, but because there was a number of deficiencies, specifically lot frontage and interior side yard setbacks as well as the off-site parking, they would have to redid their application for a site specific amendment to accommodate those deficiencies. But if you do look at the comparison table and the R3 zone table is what we use for any apartment developments, you can see that the lot area itself would have sufficient lot area. The setbacks, rear yard and the building height all comply with the R3 zone, which would be applied if apartment building is constructed new. And the building height, believe, is 22 and a half feet in size. And there would be, again, minimal modifications to exterior basins. In regards to the parking deficiencies, that was already previously discussed. The two additional stalls would be located on the adjacent parcel with a cross access or a cross access and easement agreement registered to both titles allowing for parking to be maintained. For the purposes of tonight, the recommendation is to go forward on a public meeting and that hearing would elicit public input and feedback. So to generate and get an idea of what the existing residents in this surrounding area would feel, staff would recommend to approve the application, to proceed to public consultation, receive that feedback. And I can answer any questions that board members may have and I believe the applicant is online to do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you Robert. Yes, before we go into questions, we'll ask each of the applicant if he would like to share a few points of interest.
Uh, yes, thanks again Terry. Yeah, so just to, to just elaborate a little bit on what Robert mentioned, we are the, we do own the property on 14 Park Streets. And we did go through, which has always been a duplex, I guess, for many years, but never seen, I guess, in the eyes of the city as a duplex property. but never seen, I guess, in the eyes of the city as a duplex property. So we went through the planning process and, uh, and got that approved as a duplex, um, in the eyes of the, in the eyes of the regulations today. Um, during that process, we've, uh, um, Dalmac has put up a new building for Signcraft, um, out off Macalier Drive, and the existing property, um, after speaking to many of the neighbors on the street, um, and kind of talking to them about what they thought of that property being converted into residential, um, we had nothing but positive feedback, um, with the probably fifteen or sixteen, um, neighbors on the street, streets that I spoke to personally, um, just in favor of really the, uh, the less traffic with the, the big trucks pulling in and out and the delivery, and of course, the mess that comes with a, a manuf- manufacturing company. Um, although many, you know, did, did point out that Signcraft had been a great neighbor for many years, but they also felt that, uh, residential, uh, residential, converting it to residential would be a definite asset for the street and, and also for their properties as well. So, um, we're very excited about the opportunity, um, we think it, uh, definitely helps the street and, uh, with minimal impact as we are planning on, uh, as Robert mentioned, very minimal, uh, activity to the outside of the building, um, with the focus on the renovation being mostly internal and also with the landscape, uh, you know, bringing it in line with the rest of the, the properties on that street. So, um, you know, we look forward to, uh, uh, if the members are in agreement to going to a public, uh, um, uh, public meeting with the neighbors, because it's, uh, from my experience and my, my door-to-door knocking, I know that, uh, anybody I've spoken to is very positive about the project.
Thank you very much, Stacy, uh, it, it always helps, uh, planning when, when, uh, when the proprietors go out and actually talk and, and fill the neighborhood in what's, what's happening, so, uh, thank you very much and good on you for doing that. Um, it does make the process a little easier for sure, because you know, you know what they're thinking, and you can make changes to it before it comes into planning, so, so, good on you. Uh, any questions, concerns for either Robert or Stacy?
I had, uh, one question, Mr. Chair.
Sure, go right ahead, Ms. Mayor.
Stacy, I'm just wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about what you do plan for the exterior renovations?
Um, the exterior renovations would be, not sure if Robert still has the pictures up, but it would be, all, we would be putting all-new windows in the property, as well as vinyl siding, uh, soffits and fascia that has to be replaced will be replaced. Um, and as far as landscaping, if he can put the picture back up of the front of the property, um, yes, so right now, it's, for many years, the folks at Signcraft have been using front as parking, which is, which is not allowed, uh, um, so that would be, again, converted to green space. Wherever we can, wherever we can make green space is our, that is our goal, um, to come more in line with, because of course, we know that it can't be a hundred percent to today's standards, but wherever we can, uh, uh, make the green space, we're gonna definitely do that.
You're good.
I think all those changes sound good. I drove, drove by today and, uh, pleased to hear you talk about the changes that you have planned. I think it'll, should really improve the look of the property.
Thank you. You know, and, and I might, I might just add, like, uh, you know, Signcraft, uh, I mean, it, it is a neat, uh, a neat area for all, for, for what the company does. Um, unfortunately, it doesn't really fit the neighborhood very well in non-conforming use, so anytime we can move away from that in the residential area, it's a great thing, I think, so. Um, but I mean, at the same time, they did keep it clean, like, uh, you know, but I mean, compared to what it's gonna look like, uh, I think it's, it's gonna look some nice, that's for sure. Any other questions, concerns? Counsel Yankov?
Sorry, no, I was just gonna move that we proceed, uh, to send this to public consultation, this supports our contention.
No, second half.
Okay, move by Counsel McCabe, second by Counsel Yankov. Uh, we recommend that the site-specific, uh, application be approved and proceed to a public consultation. All those in favor? Those against, if any? I see none, okay, approved, okay. Thank you very much, Stacy, uh, the planning staff will be in touch with the, uh, public meeting information, and, uh, away we go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Okay, so, uh, next on the agenda is, uh, One and One B Palmer's Lane. Uh, Laurel, uh, you can take it away, it's PIN number two-seven-five-seven-three-five.
Okay, I'm just trying to share my screen again. Okay, two seconds?
Yeah, take your turn.
Hey, here we go. So, um, this is a request to proceed to public consultation to rezone a portion of One B Palmer's Lane. Um, PIN number two-seven-five-seven-three-five from R-one S Single Detached Residential to R-three Medium Density Residential, and to amend Appendix A as official plan map from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential for portion of One B Palmer's Lane. Um, the, um, application also involves a lot consolidation, so, um, this is the survey plan, I just wanted to show the portion that would be rezoned, which would be right here, Parcel B, and appended to, um, this lot, which is currently One Palmer's Lane. So, um, the property is located in a mature neighborhood, I'm just gonna flip back to the zoning map. Um, it's bounded to the north by R-one S Single Detached Residential, um, and property zoned Low Density Residential R-two along Mount Edward Road. Um, to the east by R-one S Single Detached Residential along Palmer's Lane, um, to the south with open space, um, property, um, the Argallan property, and also, um, institutional, um, Sherwood Elementary, or Parkdale Elementary School, and to the west with R-two Low Density Residential, um, land. And then down here also is the, um, Experimental Firm. Um, they're, um, they're proposed to be, um, rezoned approximately four hun- four hundred and fifty-seven square meters in total, um, on this property, uh, this, this area here. Um, and the property is currently R-one, zoned R-one S. Um, the portion of property to be rezoned, um, and consolidated, um, with, um, One Palmer's Lane would be rezoned R-three, um, this piece here, and then the whole piece would be R-three. Um, once consolidated, the total lot area will be one thousand six hundred and eighty-seven square meters, so that includes all of, oh, sorry. That includes all of this area right here, inside this red line. Um, the bylaw requires a hundred and forty square meters per unit on a corner lot for, um, a dwelling unit, and therefore, if the property were rezoned R-three, um, it could support twelve units on site. Um, the neighborhood, um, tends to be low-density, property is immediately abutting with subject property consisting of low-density single detached dwellings to the north and, um, side and single detached dwellings to the east. The property is directly from the street from Argallan, and, um, the remainder of Palmer's Lane tends to be low-density residential along the street. Um, so if you were to continue up here, um, it's, it tends, it tends to be low-density, um, residential until you get to the other end of Palmer's Lane, which we've dealt with in the past. Um, and there is some R-three and R-four, um, development at that end, and we just, um, recently in the past year, um, approved a, um, twelve-unit townhouse development at the other end of the street. Um, currently, there is an older section of the apartment building on the site, um, which is slated to be demolished. Um, if the, uh, property were, if the building were demolished and rezoned, um, there would, the density on the property would double, um, to twelve units. Um, the current R-three zone on this property doesn't, um, R-one S doesn't incorporate, um, step zoning along Palmer's Lane. Um, if rezoning were to occur in order to mitigate any potential land use conflicts, um, a land use buffer would be required to be retained along the property boundary, um, of the R-three portion, um, to the, any of the low-density development. So I've included various sections in the official plan that should be considered when reviewing this application. They're included in your report, um, and for you to review. I've also included, um, various sections, um, that would support this, um, development, either pro and con, um, for you to review in the report, um, I think you already have. The official plan, um, supports mixed forms of housing within existing neighborhoods, um, to allow for housing choices. And, um, as we're familiar, housing choices within neighborhoods, they're important because they provide a variety of housing for people at various stages of their lives. However, it also states that new development must be physically related to its surroundings, and that there should be an appropriate relationship between height and density for new development in existing neighborhoods. Um, the city currently experiences an increased demand in housing, and, um, as we're all familiar, the vacancy rate in the city right now is, is considerably low, um, there's not a lot of, um, housing stock available for people. As it's, is it constructed, it's, um, rented. Um, so the official plan also supports various policies, which, um, supports the efficient use of services and making neighborhoods stable and sustainable by supporting more infill development. And although the building and the property have a six units, the current lot area before consolidation, um, would support nine units. So if the rezoning were not approved, um, the actual lot area could currently support nine units, although there is six on it. Um, a total of twelve units, um, would be permitted on site if the rezoning, lot consolidation were to be approved, um, the lot area, um, would be able to support that once consolidated. So the neighborhood can do so for moderately higher density, as there are amenities in the area, such as an elementary school, playground, ball field, um, there's parkland, it's a short drive, um, to, uh, shopping, there's a bus, um, a bus road and, um, bus stops in the area. There's, it's close to employment and services in the downtown core, and there's also employment services in the Charlestown Mall area and along University Avenue. Um, so in conclusion, um, given the property's, um, proximity to services and amenities and its location on the corner of Palmer's Lane and Mount Edward Road, the proposal does meet many of the technical requirements for moderate infill development within a mature, um, neighborhood. Um, notwithstanding, the lot previously occupied a six-unit apartment dwelling, and increasing it to twelve units may not be favored by area residents, it may raise some concern with some of the residents. So although residents may have concerns, staff feel that the proposal has merit and meets many of the policies of the official plan that supports appropriate infill development within a neighborhood. Um, therefore, we're recommending advancing this, um, application, um, to a public meeting. So, um, staff are recommending that Planning Board recommended Council to move to the public consultation phase.
Thank you very much, Laurel, uh, is there, Laurel, is there anyone here to speak on the project, on the developer?
Yes, I'm here, yeah, Aaron Stafford's here from Open Practice.
Oh, Aaron, how you doing, Ed?
Great, how are you?
Okay, um, this would be your opportunity, if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, um, just a, a couple things that I think, um, would like to add to it. So Laurel, if you wouldn't mind flipping to the, the site survey. Um, I just wanted to clarify that the existing single-family home that's located on Lot twenty-one dash two there currently does not have any, currently does not have any street frontage. Um, it is actually accessed by a right-of-way over, um, the proposed development lot, um, that was the Lot twenty-two dash one. So part of, um, this development is also, um, Parcel A that is listed off of twenty-one dash two is actually owned by the lot that has the existing six unit on it. So there's a bit of a, yeah, so we're actually transferring that land back to that existing single-family home to give its street frontage back onto McKay Drive and its own driveway. Um, so I'd like to just kind of clarify that. Um, the other thing I'd like to clarify is that Parcel B, um, there's nothing being built on Parcel B, it is purely a land area, so as Laurel kind of previously pointed out, that as of right, this is a nine-unit, um, as of right development. Um, really, we have three units per floor in the proposed design, so this is a matter of whether there's one more, the, the building footprint, I guess, of the building won't change, whether it's a nine or a twelve, and it really comes down to that lot area requirement, so the building height and the building size will really ultimately be the same. Um, Laurel doesn't, I don't think you have the proposed drawings, but essentially, um, it's, it's a lower-floor kind of development, half-in, half-out, um, of the, of the ground. So the building might get four to five feet higher than it would be if, if it were only nine units, but the actual footprint of the building doesn't change. So I just wanted to add those two things, I think Laurel did a great job kind of covering it. Um, but just wanted to clarify those things, we're, we're trying to, um, I guess, get a clear means of eat, or a clear means of access for the, for the residential housing behind, and really, the development is not going to expand onto that parcel, it's really an area versus, uh, number of units requirement.
Thank you very much, Aaron, uh, I guess, folks, if you've got any questions for Aaron or Laurel now would be the time. Uh, Counsel Yankov?
Thank you, and, um, thank you for that presentation. Just wondering, the existing building that's there now, um, have those, um, tenants been informed of the possible demolition of this building? And, and, and I'm wondering if, um, if, if there's any discussion around the affordability piece for this new, um, new proposed building?
Yeah, I think. Go ahead, Laurel.
I, I'm, I'm just gonna say, um, you could probably speak to this, because I believe it's vacant now, is it not, Aaron?
Yes, um, that's, that's correct, um, the, the building is vacant, and the developers, existing landlord, uh, worked with, uh, the tenants to assist them in finding new, um, homes or new apartments, um, so, uh, everyone has been relocated out of this building now. Um, and, and as far as, I guess, in terms of, uh, addressing affordability, um, this is not proceeding under a kind of one of the programs, however, you know, I, I think that, uh, any addition in, in kind of increased, uh, the number of units certainly helps with supply and demand issue, and, um, you know, generally brings down the kind of overall housing costs, but no, this is not proceeding specifically under any of the affordable housing programs.
Very much.
Thank you very much for the question and, and the answer, any other comments, folks?
I just have a question, Terry.
Sure.
Um, Aaron, sorry, I might have missed this, but were you saying there's three units per floor?
Correct.
So it'd be a, a three to four stories?
Yeah, it's a, we're, it's, it's technically under the NBC, it's a three-story, um, but there is a lower, there is, there is a lower floor, yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
You sure can, uh.
Um, a small piece of land on Mount Edward Road, it'd be just north of the current six unit. Looks like a very small lot, and I know it's not part of this application, I'm just wondering, what is that piece of land?
I believe that's someone's single-family home, um, that piece of property is occupied.
Yes. Yeah, there is an existing single-family home on that lot, correct.
Any other questions, Bob?
Nope.
No, so, the one question, I guess, I have, Aaron, would be snow clearing, uh, I see your parking lot is somewhat close, uh, to the, uh, ones, um, there, as you head up, uh, Palmer's Lane, just, uh, um, where would snow be piled, I guess, would be my question.
Um, I, I guess I'll have to talk to the developer about his specific plans for, for snow clearing. Um, we do have a, a bit of room there, um, in, in the kind of odd-shaped, uh, portion of that lot, um, but whether his plan is to store it in that kind of northeast corner of the parcel, or whether it would be having to, um, uh, relocate it, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, currently, you know, currently, there is a six unit there, um, with parking, and, and we're certainly adding that additional land area to the back, so.
Yeah, it's just, it's always a concern, right, it's something we always don't think of, but it, you know, with all, with all the, uh, ones around, I, I just thought, uh, you know, nobody wants any extra moisture.
Yeah, and really, it's, it's, it's interesting, because the grading, um, of that property is, it's really coming from the north down. The low point is at the corner of Mount Edward and Palmer's Lane, so he'll cause his own problems. The low point is at the corner of Mount Edward and Palmer's Lane, so he'll cause his own problems.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah. Might be a little slippery coming in. But anyway, thank you very much for answering that. Any other questions, concerns for Laurel or Aaron? If not, I guess I'll need a motion to recommend Planning Board to council and then advance it to a public consultation. Okay, moved by Bob Kennedy, seconded by... I think Shallen's gonna put her hand up.
I can second it.
Seconding by Shallen. I'll just do any, 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 I don't know. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Or say that you're, and if there's anyone against, please let me know. I see none. Thank you very much, folks. So that will move on to a public consultation. So we're now getting into lot consolidations. Number four is, on the agenda is the Waymouth Street and Water Street, PIN number 825935 and 825950. It's a request to consolidate two parcels and to transfer ownership to the Harbor Authority. Jennifer, I believe you're gonna speak to this?
Yep, I am, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Not yet.
Not yet. Oh, it says connecting, okay. Just let me know when you can see it there.
Yeah, it's starting, it's starting to work there now.
Okay, yeah, so this is item 64, an application for a lot consolidation. The application is for the street immediately south of Waymouth and Water Street. The site is zoned port zone. And this image is showing the subject site leading down to the Marina. It's more or less a housekeeping amendment for the landowners. The CADC owned the parcel before this entrance down to the Harbor Authority was created. So they're just looking to transfer the ownership to the Harbor Authority as the logical owner. But because it's in the port zone, it does require council approval. So we are recommending that Planning Board recommend approval, that council recommend approval for the lot consolidation. The applicant is here, if you have any questions for him as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Jen. Yeah, if the applicant chooses to have, say a few words on behalf of the project, he's more than willing. Who was it to hear, Jennifer?
It's Aaron Hanson.
Oh, Aaron, okay.
Hi guys, Aaron here.
Hi, Aaron, how are you? Welcome to Planning Board.
Thank you, yeah, this is very much a housecleaning item. And we always joked that we were gonna set up a toll booth and charge the gravel guys to go through.
Geez, it'd be a moneymaker.
So yeah, not, that, nothing really, this is just housekeeping.
Yeah, okay, cool, thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Jennifer or Aaron, folks? Wow, we got a, why, a bunch? But this one's pretty straightforward, I guess, right? So if there is no questions or concerns, uh, hold. Mr. Hamby, go ahead.
One question. So if this is considered a road, it's not considered one of the city roads?
Uh, that's right, CADC does own it.
So then they would be responsible for a tough keeping and access into the Maple Basin, all that stuff?
That's correct, yeah, they are responsible for the maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Anything, any other concerns, questions, folks? Okay, so what I'll be looking for is a, is a motion for Planning Board to recommend that the lot consideration happen. Moved by Chris Fournier, seconded by Counsel Yankov. All those in favor? I see everyone, anyone against? I don't see anyone, okay. Great, thank you very much, that's another one off the books. Uh, so next, uh, is the 64 Maple Avenue, PIN number 8393108. 480475. Laurel is at the floor again.
Hey. All right, so this is another lot consolidation. It's, the subject properties are located in the neighborhood of Sherwood on the corner of Pine Drive and Maple Avenue, right here, and here. And it's, Sherwood Elementary School is located on the corner and Cody Banks Arena is located adjacent to the school at 58 Maple Avenue. So this is the school, this is Cody Banks Arena. They're located within a mature, low-density residential neighborhood. But the applicant, the government of PEI, who's represented by the trustees of Sherwood School, has applied to consolidate the property owned by the city of Charlestown to add an additional land to their property for open space. So, let me see if I can go to the plan. This is the portion that's gonna be consolidated with the school. Cody Banks Arena is here, the school is here. What's going on, the school is expanding. So their playground area will be used, current playground area will be used for the expansion. While they're, under construction, they plan to use this piece that they're purchasing from the city as sort of like their marshaling area for construction supplies. And then once construction is complete, it'll be converted into a playground. So under the current bylaw, it, any lot consolidations outside of the R1 or R2 zone is required to go through Planning Board and Council for approval. So this is why we're, we've actually forwarded this application. Staff are in support of it. We feel that it's appropriate, it doesn't offend the official plan and it's not contrary to the bylaw, so we are recommending for approval.
Thank you very much, Laurel. Any questions?
Is there a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sure, Shallen.
So Laurel, that's the land that runs right along, parallel to Maple Avenue, is that correct?
No, it's this piece right here. It's in behind Cody Banks.
Where the bowling is.
Oh, yeah, it's right here. So this is the arena, this is the school, this is Maple Avenue, Pine Drive. So it's in behind, it would be adjacent to the residential area.
Okay, all right. And just another point of clarification, so when they talk about trustees of Sherwood School, is, is that intended to be the government?
Um, I believe so, because the application is both under the provincial government and trustee, the subdivision plans with trustees of Sherwood School.
I just wonder why it wasn't Department of Education, but just, a mi, very minor point.
That's how the subdivision was actually applied for. So I'm not really sure what the, you know, the logistics are with their ownership, but that is who applied for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Rosemary. Any other questions? If not, I guess we can move on to the conclusion, which would be a motion for us to recommend that the lot consolidation of 64 Maple Avenue and the portion of 58 Maple Avenue be approved, subject to a final PIN survey. So move, Aaron, a seconder. Moved by Basil Hamley, seconded by Chris Fournier. All those in favor, please raise your hand. See, and anyone against? I see none. Okay, that's great, thank you very much. So we got, what, we got one left to go, I believe, it's the, the 3 Prince Street. There is a bunch of properties there that are all gonna be tied in. I could read them off, but I'll leave that for Robert. If you wanna take it, Robert, and show your map, away we go.
Again, folks, can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Uh, so this is basically a lot consolidation of six individual parcels. The lot and the parcel is owned by CADC. They're just seeking to clean up the crisscrossing property lines, the parking lot, and make it one, one whole parcel in one asset. So just another technical readjustment and clearing of the property lines to have that one parcel. So that's the parking lot itself, so subject to you with the Founder's Hall Food Market behind us. But that's the, the parking lot, and then this would be the lot consolidation that would come from that. So we would recommend consolidation to clean up all those crisscrossing property lines. And I can take any questions.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions? I guess I would just have one, how come it hasn't been done before? Just a question I have.
I'll take that one. To be honest, it just never rose to the top of the to-do pile.
Okay.
And really, it only came up at property tax time. And, you know, if you didn't tackle it at that moment, it disappeared for another year. But now I'm on the scene and I'm taking care of her.
We're getting her done.
You got her.
Thanks, Aaron. Any other questions for Aaron or Robert? If not, then I'll need a motion to consolidate the six parcels. Moved by Counsel Yankov, seconded by Basil Hamley. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Looks like everybody, thank you very much. Uh, that concludes most of the items. I do have one more, which is the introduction of new businesses. Anyone have anything? I believe we changed it the first. If not, I'll just need one more motion. That's to adjourn. Moved by Rosemary, seconded by Chris Fournier. All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your hand. Thank you everybody very much for your time. Enjoy your evening, stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.